The Clerk, to please call the roll.
Burl.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Halsted.
Here.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Merchant. Morales.
Here.
Morse.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks. Steck.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen members present, three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now, we'll move on to item three. I'll call on Commissioner DeBoer, who will provide the invocation this morning.
Good morning, everyone. I want to go back really quick to 1776, when our founders declared independence. We hold these truths self-evident, all men are equal, endowed by our Creator with inalienable rights, and of those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And the Declaration ends with a, um, to support the Declaration, they pledged to each other their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor. It was treason, right? The Crown, they would be hunted by the Crown. And there's a line in there, though, at the very end, and it's how they accomplished this, "with a firm reliance on divine providence." They pledged to each other their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor. And our founders, they're far from perfect, but they held to that firm reliance on divine providence for God to provide for them. And so, let's do that this morning. Will you pray with me? Father, we come before you. God, we are so desperate for you. We know, we need you, Lord, and help us to rely on you, on your provision. Lord, please break us and humble us and break, and build us back anew, so that we can have this government that's firmly reliant on your providence. Thank you so much for the blessing of this county, for the servants here, and for the public here as well whom we serve. And it's in the name of Jesus we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBoer. We will move on to Agenda Item Five, which is public comment related to only Agenda action items. Is there anyone that wishes to speak only on the Agenda action items this morning? Good morning, Pastor Scott. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman, and Commissioners and staff, and my fellow citizens. Real quickly, I just want to speak to number six, letter C. First of all, uh, I do want to say, oh, I have unlimited time. The clock is not running. Thank you. There we go. I do want to say greetings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Daniel Scott. Again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ, thirty-year residence, resident of the county. Thank you, Commissioner DeBoer, for that powerful prayer. I've mentioned this before, your first name means pure one. And the little bit I know about you, I can consent that that's true. Real quickly, concerning finances, I want to make an appeal that you do what the city does, and have a little clicker out here in the lobby, so we can have our parking tickets paid, with all the money that you have here. Give us free parking. Uh, well, we all know what's happening in our nation, funds being cut, coming out of Washington. And I'm just appealing, generally speaking, that we might be sensitive to spending the money that we do have in the county. I think you know my thoughts about the amphitheater and these other expensive items. Twenty-four million dollars just for the parking ramp. Uh, I just encourage you-
Mr. Scott, I wanted to just ask that you keep it to the Agenda item specifically, and you will have another opportunity at the end. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm done. Thank you for your-
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your generosity.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment related to Agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Consent Agenda. I will call on Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I move adoption of the Consent Agenda.
Is there support? It's been supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item Number Seven, Resolutions. And for Item Seven A, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move that Resolution Fourteen of today's date, Emmens Lake Drainage District is meant, brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. Be adopted.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Halsted. Is there any discussion on this? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Just very quickly, this particular drain, the Emmens Drain, is in District Twenty-One, my district, and I am supportive of the need to put this in. This is an area that we call the Caledonian Triangle. And no, we've not had any missing airplanes or people or boats there. But, um, this particular area, Emmens Drain, does have flooding problems. And I know the Drain Commissioner's been working very hard with the farmers at the corner of Hunter's and M-37 to fix the drain tiles that have been contributing to the problems there. So, this, this particular area in the district has been problematic, and it does need to have this done. And I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other discussion or questions or comments? I see none, so we will call the roll. Madam Clerk, will you please assist?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Fourteen, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Faber. Halsted. Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Fourteen is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item Seven B. Um, and I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution Fifteen of today's date, which calls for approval of contributions to support the state of the county. Comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Um, Al, do you want to give a really quick high level of this?
Sure.
I don't know if we need to get in the weeds, but just to make sure for folks that weren't on the finance committee.
I think the basic piece of this is that we're asking you to establish a cost center, so that as we get donations in from a number of different donors, and as we allocate general fund money, that it carries over and doesn't disappear in general fund other at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Um, any questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, I don't see any. Um, this is a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Seven C, and I will again call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution Sixteen of today's date, which calls for approval of the MPP compensation study financing. This comes to us from Human Resources.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner, Minority Vice Chair McLeod. Um, Al, could you give a quick overview on this, please?
Yes. So, you'll recall that over the past couple of years, the Board has approved labor agreements with each of the nine unions that represent pieces of our workforce. Historically, along that same cycle, which is a five-year cycle in most cases, we do a MPP compensation study. And it's to, I would say that mostly compensation studies are seventy-five percent, make sure there's good internal equity, and twenty-five percent, you check the market. I think that percentage has changed in recent years, as it is more challenging to attract and retain employees. Uh, this is something we typically do every five years. Uh, we had budgeted five hundred thousand dollars in contingency to pay for this. Uh, the study came back at about nine hundred, close to a million dollars. So, uh, we're planning to pay for this over two budgets. And we did explain this back in November in our executive meeting. Uh, and so, uh, the request would be to move, uh, four hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred fourteen dollars from contingency into the appropriate lines in order to pay these, uh, you know, we're implementing, it's not, it's over two years, so everybody is going to the first next pay classification, and then in the October One budget, we'll finish a job and move people from that first pay bump, if they do get more than a one classification pay bump, uh, at that time.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or discussion on this? No? Okay, great. Um, with that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Sixteen, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer. Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Sixteen is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven D, and I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move Resolution Number Seventeen, the appropriate elections reimbursements from the Clerk's office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner DeBoer. Um, I think this one is pretty straightforward. Are there any questions or discussion? Nope? Okay, seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to Agenda Item Seven E, and I will call, uh, once again, on Commissioner Steck, who is busy this morning.
Making up for lost time, I guess. Um, thank you, Chair Green. Uh, I move approval of Resolution Eighteen of today's date, which essentially authorizes the issuance of a general obligation limited tax notes, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five. This comes to us from our Treasurer.
There's support?
Support.
Supported again by Commissioner Legrand. Thank you. Um, I think this one's relatively straightforward. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I know our Treasurer is here as well. Discussion, questions? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Um, there was quite a few pages of information involved with this particular thing. And my question was, is this like a boilerplate thing that we do? We just change the dates and... Is it a boilerplate thing?
Please, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, is the word, is very similar to what we did last year?
Yeah, it's very, the only thing that changed was that up to number. So, last year, it was twenty-five million. Um, we had been getting some feedback from some of the bigger entities, local entities, that the delinquent taxes were going to be higher than normal. So, we bumped it up from twenty-five, up to twenty-five million, to borrow up to twenty-five million to thirty million. Uh, it's not going to be thirty million. It, it may hit twenty million, but we just didn't know at the time when we submitted this, and that's why we put it up. But other than that, it's pretty much the same type of resolution that our bond attorney put together for us last year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Treasurer, thanks for being here today. I appreciate all that you do to make sure that we are supporting those that are in delinquency for their property taxes. Um, I've been reminding folks all the time to make sure to call your office and work with you all for that. Um, is this issuance of bonds to support the local municipalities something that all county Treasurers do, or is it a subset of county Treasurers that do this?
Uh, it's probably fifty-fifty. Um, some will pay cash. The smaller, uh, well-financed counties will pay cash for this. Uh, in the past, um, or when I first started in twenty-twenty-one, we started talking about going towards that. And, and so, we're, uh, year to year, we're collecting a little bit and putting it into, uh, our reserve fund, our, our DTAN fund. Um, but there's so many unknowns right now with all the lawsuits that have to do with foreclosure, that, uh, I really don't want to go down, we'll continue to save, but I don't want to go down that road until I know what our full liability is, uh, from, uh, our past uses of this fund, you know, from, I think it goes all the way back to two thousand thirteen, uh, that, uh, foreclosures are being challenged.
I appreciate that. And, um, I know our local municipalities are very appreciative for your collaboration and making sure that these don't, uh, fall on their backs, uh, until they get collected, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I don't know if we have some, some new Commissioners, this money goes. Uh, I'll be writing, once, once we, uh, get this money, I'll be writing checks to all our local municipalities, the millages, the schools, community colleges, to make them whole on the delinquent funds, and I become the collection agent on those delinquent funds.
Thank you. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just have a question about some of the language, and gonna give you an opportunity to help me understand. Good luck. Um, so, it says to establish the revolving fund, yet it's something we have every year. So, are we adding to an old fund, or is it, like, every year is a separate-
It's, it's existing fund.
It is the existing fund. Okay. So, it's just, it's adding to it rather than establishing something totally new.
Correct. Well, because it, we're doing it every year, we're still paying off twenty-fours, and, and partially twenty-threes right now. We usually have these two-year notes paid off within, I'd say anywhere from eighteen to twenty months. Uh, so, we don't, it doesn't take us the full twenty-four months to pay it off. So, it's, it's a constant fund that's, it's rotating.
Okay, but in a very short term, like, nothing lasts longer than two years?
Yeah, we, we can't. We have to have it paid off within two years.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to Treasurer for that work to someday kind of self-fund this, uh, this need. It's a, it's a good, a good thing to help our local municipalities cash flow standpoint. They don't have to worry about the, the risk of the delinquency level. Um, so, I appreciate that. And I'm just curious if we, if we know if this is the, forget the numbers you said, maybe it was like fifteen to twenty percent up in delinquencies from last year. Is, is that the start of a worrisome trend?
Not like we're putting you on the spot or-
Yeah, I gotta be careful. So, it's one thing that we cannot, I cannot control, you know, the people not paying their taxes. It's, it's, it is a, probably, a, a sign of, um, of what could be coming. Um, we are up, uh, from two years ago, I think we're at our lowest, at a, close to, um, we borrowed less than fifteen, I think. It went up to, uh, in the last two years, it's probably gone up two or three million dollars. Um, so, our millage rates are up, uh, taxes, property taxes are higher, and we all know that anybody who owns a home knows that your property taxes are higher. So, those that, uh, that struggle, whether it's sickness, loss of employment, health, divorce, you name it, life, right? Uh, they struggle, and that's kind of, uh, we, that's why, since I've been in office, we focus on prevention, you know? How can we prevent foreclosure from ever happening? And that's what my team does, and so, we're out there. So, yeah, it is higher. We, we talk about this. It, this, this is not going to be, uh, it's not getting easier. And, uh, every time the millage rate goes up, it, it doesn't get any easier for these individuals either. The bleeding doesn't stop. It's like laundry. Never ends. Property taxes.
Death, property taxes, and laundry. Yeah. Worth noting that our, um, county general millage rate is not up. The, uh, but there are a lot of other millages that you're responsible for helping to collect that-
Right.
-are new, or have gone into effect, so.
All the local millages as well.
Yeah, on the whole.
Schools.
And the, the values are up, which is increasing what folks owe, for sure. Um, Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, I made this comment at Finance as well, that authorization to, to basically borrow thirty million dollars seems like a lot of money, but you and your department have been excellent in, uh, recovering from, uh, the taxpayers, um, so that the actual exposure is relatively minimal at the end of the day. But, um, but there still is some exposure. And I guess my question is, uh, if you had to borrow twenty million to reimburse the local jurisdictions, and you then go out and recover from the taxpayers, nineteen million, nine hundred dollars, who pays, who's responsible for that shortfall?
So, you're saying I'm not collecting enough?
No, I said you collect-
No, I know, I don't understand your question.
My question is, you don't, do you collect a hundred percent of the tax?
Uh, the, the fund is made whole a hundred percent. Uh, we probably collect ninety-nine point three percent of it. And then, what we don't collect usually are, those are the properties that I have to foreclose on. And, and then that's, those are areas that, uh, hopefully, an auction would take care of those. The funds from an auction would take care of those, that addition. And, uh, but if there are, there are going to be certain properties that you just can't sell, uh, because of contamination or whatnot. Uh, I haven't had any, I know my predecessors have had a few, uh, prior to this, but, uh, we can charge back the local units that, that amount.
Okay. So, yes, that's that point zero seven percent-
Right, right.
-that I was wondering about.
Right.
So, that does get charged back to the, uh-
It can get charged back. It used to be up to, uh, the discretion of, of the Treasurer prior to twenty-twenty, but since the new law with excess proceeds, we got to look at every individual parcel and, and know that, okay, if this parcel, we, we weren't able to become whole, then we charge that back to the local unit.
Okay, good. That's what I wondered. And by the way, no, I'm not implying that you're not-
No, no, I didn't say you were. I just, I didn't understand the question, so, sorry.
Yeah, just the opposite. I think you're doing an excellent job in, in recovering here in a way that's respectful of our taxpayers and, uh, and the jurisdictions.
Yeah, and that's, that's also the reason why, and I, I don't mean to prolong this, uh, we didn't go out for a bond rating. We're saving forty thousand dollars by not doing that, because, uh, the airport just did one. We know our county is triple-A bond rated. We don't have to go and prove it again and spend that money to have a rating agency come in. So, it's, we talked to our, our, our rating, uh, counsel and, and Jeff, and, and say, is there any reason to spend this money? And usually, these last couple of years, it's been no, there's no need to, because we're going to get the same people who want to invest in something very, very, that has very low risk and is triple-A bond rated.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. I want to thank you for your service, and your department, um, is doing a great job on its assignment of collecting taxes, but you've also been doing a better job in communicating with residents and supplying information on other resources that are out there to help them when they're in trouble and in danger of foreclosure, and the different resources that are out there to help them. Want to ask, how did that come about, just and let you know the community is appreciative of that.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your help, too. There's times that I reach out to individual Commissioners because, uh, of a certain parcel that I, I'm struggling with. And, uh, Commissioner Womack has been very helpful in, in helping me with those types of situations.
Did you have a question, Commissioner? Was that, was there, did you have a question?
Just how did that come about, that your department wanted to reach out and also let them know that our resources, because some of the resources that you let the community know about-
Right.
-even some of the state help, has helped a lot of people, a number of homes in our district. And I just want to thank you for my constituents.
No, it's-
And ask, how did that come about? Because they, they feel it was a little, uh, new attention added to try to help them not go-
So, you know, as a county Treasurer, responsible for foreclosure, it's the last thing we ever want to do is foreclose, right? I just, my, it's, it's my statutory duty to collect the taxes, so I'm going to do whatever I can to collect the taxes. I don't want to foreclose. So, that communication with, uh, the, each individual, uh, parcel owner, these are homes, these are people. I like to put a face to this and have, or build that relationship and find them resources. The resources have always been there. We use, uh, home repair services a lot. They're, they do a wonderful job helping these people budget, getting them back on, on the right path. And, um, it's just, the resources are there, it's communicating with them, simple communication, just let's, there's times that I, I can't get in touch with anybody, and I have to contact you, or I go knock on their door. And it's, sometimes it's a, nine out of ten times, it's a great conversation I have with these people, because it, it's like, I'm not here to foreclose on your home, I'm here to have a conversation with you. And, and usually, it ends up in, uh, going down, or getting these people on the correct path.
Well, thank you for that energy, and a special thanks from our seniors who have, uh, really appreciated your effort.
Yeah, thank you. All right, anyone else? Uh, thank you, Treasurer McGregor, and I'd
like to echo, appreciate the compassion that you bring to the role and the servant's heart. We appreciate that very much. Okay, um, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Eighteen, Commissioners, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer. Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Eighteen is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes our resolutions. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is public comment related to general county matters. Welcome back. Mr. Jones, please say your name and address. You have three minutes.
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at nine-six-seven Temerick Avenue, and I was footin' it here a little bit, and I found this little crab as I was footin' it.
Oh, my god.
It was pretty cool. It's not an actual crab, though. It's a little thing. But it was pretty cool, though, because, uh, my birthday is in July, and as you know, the Cancer sign is a crab, so it was pretty funny. I think it was just a sign from the universe. Uh, I'm, uh, here to speak to you guys about a couple of things. So, uh, I just got, uh, okay from Epic Games, for Epic Games, which is a thirty-two billion dollar company, to give an educational session here in Kent County at GRPS Schools. I'm very excited to be able to have Epic Games, who developed the Unreal Engine. It's a thirty-two billion dollar company. Again, I'm gonna say that again, because if Epic Games would be here right now, it'd be richer than the DeWalt's of Van Andos, to be honest. Epic Games, thirty-two billion. Dee Jones. And then, uh, we have this luxurious ATM that I was speaking to my, uh, city government about. We're actually going to be creating some cryptocurrency ATMs, where you can actually do the end game and earn virtual currency and using games and video games, and you can exchange that for cash. What a unique thing. It's cool, because the Unreal Engine allows blockchain technology. That means that Dee Jones can utilize the games that he already has developed, and you can actually earn cash from this. I'm going to be a billionaire one day. I'm going to the United Nations, doing a lot of cool innovative things for my county. I, I love that Commissioner Boujack supports Bitcoin in, uh, Danboro. As I said, you're one of my good friends. I look at you as a friend and not just a politician. I'm going to give to you guys one day, because I love you guys, that you support me publicly. Thank you. And then, a couple days ago, reflection from the universe, I was on Facebook, and I was on the GR Business Journal, on the I was on the GR Business Journal, on the face on the front page of it for bringing esports to Kent County. Now it's actually a reality. And then I'm also going to be doing an esports event during Comic Con, which will be the largest regional finals in the state. So I'm doing the largest events in Kent County and doing some innovative stuff. And I'm very excited. I didn't show you guys this other picture, but this was when I spoke at the conference at GRCC, and the room was so full of African-American students that they were standing up and sitting on the plies and stuff like that. It was so full. And these kids were all interested in crypto and NIO and shoutcasting and podcasting and gaming and traditional sports. I can't wait to offer all of the opportunities to all of the students because I actually have an article coming out today on the largest news station in Michigan. And then again, I'm just thankful to be alive, to be able to give back to my community, to pioneer, to lead, because I'm a global visionary. And I'm going to be a billionaire. Hopefully the divorcees don't like how rich I get.
Thank you, Dee. Welcome back, Mrs. Cribs. Please state your name and address.
Dorothy Cribs, 1980 Deerfield Court in Cascade Township.
Thank you.
And I'm here to talk about our health department. When COVID happened, I so appreciated Kent County's Health Department keeping me informed. And Dr. Adam London would do a video, the website provided information as to what was going on in the hospitals. We all felt isolated during the lockdowns, and this kept me knowing what was going on. He did the video every Though I was disappointed when he wanted to keep our kids masked the second year. I found that very disappointing. As we now know, that really affected the children and just the length of time that we kept kids masked. It really affected stuff. The reason I'm speaking today about the Health Department is that since the last meeting, I got, I've signed up for notifications. I got two different notifications from the Health Department. The Health Department urges prevention following two pediatric flu deaths. There's no information about these two deaths as to, was there anything else going on with these children? When we had the lockdowns, my son was going to GRCC. He had to break his wrist, his right wrist. And biology labs were online, and I had to watch the, I was watching the labs with him because I had to write his notes for him so he could turn in his work. So I learned about herd immunity. And herd immunity is not gotten through vaccines. It has gotten through people or animals getting the disease. And some animals could fight against that, in which case it protects the whole herd. Maybe I'm not explaining that correctly, but when I was young, okay, I'm really old, but we only got five vaccines. And that was back when they actually were working. Our kids now get over 80 vaccines. There's something in the vaccine to trigger their immune systems. And there are a number of schools of thought that that is what is causing some health issues among our kids today. Saying that they ought to get this flu vaccine, it's not, this is not giving full information. The current flu vaccine is less than 40% effective. So urging children to get the flu vaccine because we had two pediatric deaths is not giving us full information. So there's others that has to do with this that they've come out with. So I think this needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Mrs. Cribs. Is there anyone else? Pastor Scott, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Green. This, of course, is Women's History Month. And in my opinion, every month should be Women's History Month. We should be mourning, though, for the millions of little women that have been murdered in our nation through what they call abortion. That's probably over 40 million girls. And that's not counting, of course, the almost 40 million boys. I'm praising the Lord for our federal government for cutting off funds to places like 425 East Cherry. And I have good news for you. Brother Jordan Sweezer, who was active in interceding for these precious babies, he used to do it at 320 East Fulton. Praise the Lord for that being closed down. And now 425 East Cherry, as of recently, his ministry has saved 111 precious babies from being murdered at these two locations. Here's another one. That's Jordan Holding, baby Hanin. So there is some good news. But at 425 East Cherry, they call themselves Planned Parenthood. We call it Planned Genocide. And also within Corwell Health and Metro Hospital, they both have departments where they're murdering babies. I don't know if you knew this, but in California, they've legalized infanticide up to 28 days after birth. 28 days. After a child is born, they can decide to murder the baby later. And of course, you could just think of the gruesome ways that they have to perform that. Let us pray this never happens in Michigan, although our current administration would like to do that. We must do all we can to shut those places down. Just think of it. Different women within this organization are on record, video bragging about, quote, "You have to come and play with our tissues and see if it's cool enough for you," unquote. She laughed about playing with the tissue of murdered fetuses. Tran Nguyen, Vice President of Abortion Access at Planned Parenthood. If we stop this in our city and our county, the Lord would bless us tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, the Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick items today. I just wanted to mention, actually say thank you for those who toured the former hospital facility and then the following session where we got input. I think we're locked into a place where we can provide two fully vetted options for you to make a decision. And we're working to do that as soon as we can. Also, just wanted to mention that I and I think four commissioners attended the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, DC a couple of weekends ago. I'm on the Board of the National Association of County Administrators. We had several events. One of those is an idea exchange. And I think we had about 130 administrators show up for a room that held 90. And obviously, just a lot of exchange on who's doing what to prepare for potential executive order impacts or budget or whatever that might be. And I just wanted to report that I'm proud of our staff. I think that we're well ahead of the curve as far as preparation. Just trying to be very well informed so we can be very nimble to react to whatever comes our way. And so I think we're in about as good a position as we can be there. And other than that, as you know, we're kind of well into the budget season and working hard to get that completed later this year. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Al. Move on to Agenda Item Number 10, Reports. I will start off and say that we have received and filed the John Balzoo Annual Report. That's available to you if you'd like to review it. It may have been sent to commissioners, I'm not sure. But if you'd like it, we have it for you. Received and filed. Anybody else with reports? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. We met with the Area Agency on Aging for the Advisory Council. And they have a really great toolkit. Of course, we know we're trying to protect Medicaid right now. And there's a great toolkit for seniors. It says, Stand Up for Seniors, How to Protect Essential Services for Seniors and the Caregivers, because they're not luxuries, they're lifelines. So I just want everyone to know that there is a great toolkit that they can go online for advocacy for seniors, for legislative listings, senior services. There's a letter. It gives you everything that you need to do and know so that we can help protect the senior services. So thank you very much. I appreciate the work that the Area Agency on Aging is doing to make an impact. The Older Michiganyans Day is coming up, so if anyone would like information, they can get more information at Area Agency on Aging.
Thank you. We appreciate their work. Anyone else? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, the Grand Valley Metro Council met here in this chamber on Thursday morning. And we discussed the expenditures from last year and approved the budget for 2025. And we also had some new members that were welcomed into the group. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Last time I reported to you, just after Lake Shore Regional Entity Meeting, that there were against some significant funding challenges in the region under the Medicaid system and the Healthy Michigan system. I think it was the next day, just to make sure that you all have on your radar, the State Department did issue a notice and request for comment stating that they would be submitting out for bid the PHP system. So that could yield some fairly significant changes, probably not tomorrow, but in the relatively near future, we'll be again looking at the entire system. So stay tuned.
The hits keep coming. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else for reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 11, Miscellaneous. I'd like to, since we don't have a lot of controversy today, it feels like a good time to say, we, I'm going to start running the timer for our own comments during miscellaneous. I think we should be held to the same standard that the public are. The difference is, you guys get two opportunities to speak. So if you, if you want to come back for another, that's totally fine. But I want to keep us to that same standard. I'm not saying that because I expect anything crazy today, but feel free, I suppose. Anybody for miscellaneous? Commissioner Ponstein first. Yeah.
Okay, this is going to be, I'm going to be the test case then on this timer.
This is tricky, Commissioner.
So I also attended the NACO Legislative Conference. I want to appreciate the colleagues and Al for showing up. It was kind of interesting. I sat on the National Board of Directors of County Commissioners. So I had the opportunity to attend a reception hosted by the Canadian Government where I met Jeff Long, which is the Minister of Economics. In such a toxic world that we live in, there could have been just a lot of shouting. But he basically stated the case of Canada, was very open to what we thought and ways to work through this, which we will do. I mean, a lot's going on, but at the end of the day, I don't think Canada wants to throw us under the bus. And we're certainly not going to throw them under the bus. I also had an opportunity to meet with four congressmen and Senator Peters. I want to thank Congressman Molinar, Skolton and Heisinga, and then John James, that also agreed to meet. John James was kind of interesting because he started by saying that when he was elected, people think that he just, you know, represents his district. And that's really not how Congress is set up. He was elected by those people to represent the state of Michigan. So his viewpoint, he didn't care if you were, I was from Kent County or anywhere in the state. He was looking way at solutions. And it was the same thing with Congresswoman Skolton. I think we talked about things we agreed on, not the things that we disagreed on. And then to end it, can't take credit for this because I think Granville had a club bowling team back when I was in high school, which is some time ago. But the previous two years, the Granville Boys Bowling Team won state championships. This year, they fell short, but good for us is the girls stepped up and they won their first state championship. I know it's not a sport that you see on the news reports in the evening, but it was a philosophy when I was on the board is to have as many opportunities for as many students to enjoy the benefits of athletic competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Congratulations to the Lady Bulldogs. Linda has informed me that our rules actually say commissioners have up to five minutes to speak. Faber already knew. That's not surprising, Steve. He was going to call the appeal on that one there. So five minutes, according to the standing rules. I had, I had Commissioner Boujack next.
Thank you, Chair. I also had the opportunity to go to the National Association of Counties. And I just want to thank my fellow commissioners and Al, our administrator, for their leadership. Al was very helpful in navigating around Washington, DC, knew where to go. Stan, Mr. Knows Everybody, was introducing us to all the people that he knew through the Michigan Association of Counties and his thing. And Katie was brave and learned how to navigate the Washington, DC metro, invited me to go onto the metro, which was quite an experience. And then Commissioner Hennessy invited me to go to the zoo with her. And I got to see a panda when I was in Washington, DC. So an excellent trip. And I just want to thank all the commissioners for all they did to help me on that trip. And the second thing I wanted to mention is, last Sunday, you should have all received an email from the administrator. I've been asking for a list of all of the county responsibilities on line items. And you should have received an email with an Excel spreadsheet that has all of the federal line items. Please take the opportunity to look at that. There's hundreds and hundreds of them there. We're all responsible for those things. And I think everyone should be familiar with that list. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Fisher Womack.
Yes, just want to thank Commissioner Hillebrand for inviting me and other commissioners out to the kids' food basket. We had a chance to hear from the staff and see some of the volunteers at work and just the ingenuity that they put into this farm that's right here in the urban area, which is exhilarating to see. And definitely want to be more of a participant in helping those endeavors. Also want to welcome back our Minority Vice Care Commissioner McLeod. Thank her for her service and her vision of helping all of us to be more active, more effective, more, make sure we get the information that we need to be more effective commissioners. And just want to thank Commissioner McLeod and welcome her back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for miscellaneous? Okay, if not, I have a few that'll be brief. I'd also like to welcome back Minority Vice Chair McLeod. We missed you. We're glad you're here. And we've been thinking about you and praying for you over the last couple of months. I also, on a not-so-fun note, but positive outcome, I think some of you are aware, Commissioner Hennessy was in an automobile accident, but she's doing fine. And I think was going to try to be here today. But just wanted to say we hope that she recovers quickly. But I think everything's all right. So she was fortunate in that regard. Later on today, I'm trying to get folks out of here because I know several of you would like to attend. The Committee to Honor Cesar Chavez is having, it's the 25th anniversary of the committee, and they're holding the three community events, I believe in Commissioner Morales's district. So we have a proclamation and encourage you guys to head over there if you can. There's a march, I think a community conversation or meeting, and then a luncheon. So we congratulate them on 25 years and encourage you to attend if you're able. Also, this Saturday will be the 46th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, put on by the Ancient Order of Hibernians. As an Irish American, I hope you check it out. And then finally, it is Women's History Month, as was mentioned earlier. I just want to acknowledge that we, for the first time in the history of Kent County, have a majority of women on this board, which I think is a really great thing. So I'd like to applaud that, which I think is great. Thank you to the wonderful women that we have the privilege to serve with, all you do for your communities. And Lori will glare at me if I don't mention that. Remind you that we're going to do a photo after the board meeting with the ladies. So thank you for your service and happy Women's History Month to all. With that, I don't have anything else. I will call on Commissioner DeBoer for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. All those in favor, say aye.